For the record, it is Tuesday, August 20th. It's seven minutes after six. We'll start with our call attendance. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Milam.
Here.
Councilmember Burnt.
Here.
Councilmember Palmer.
Here.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Here.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Here.
Councilmember Borton.
Here.
Mayor DeVere.
Here. Item number two is adoption of the agenda. It is actually the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join us in the pledge.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three is the community invocation. Pastor Moore here. I didn't think I saw him. So we will go ahead and move to item four, Adoption of the Agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
We have some changes to the agenda. On the item eight, C, eight D, eight E, those will be removed from the agenda. Item, well, we've got continuances, requests. Item eight F will be continuing, or a request to continue to next week, August 27th. We'll deal with that when we get to it. Item eight G is a request to continue to September 3rd. We'll deal with that when we get to it, most likely continuing it to September 10th. And we're going to add on an executive session. As a new item 10, it would be an executive session pursuant to Idaho State Code 74206-1D and 1F. And with those changes, I move we adopt the amended agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda as amended. Those in favor say aye.
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 All ayes. Item five, under announcements. We have a couple of things coming up to remind you about. Myak has their kickoff. That's the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council on Monday, August 26th. Starts at six and at seven. We do it two different times to accommodate parents and their teens. We have a candidate for mayor and city council openings. The filing period opens August 26th, runs to September 6th. First day of school on August 26th. Parents celebrate. Kids are not ready to end their summers, right? And just a reminder, if you haven't been out to look at the tabernacle of Moses at Cincy, it's spectacular. I was toured there last night. And it's open from 4:00 to 8:40 each night until the 24th. Any other announcements?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Milam.
I do have a couple of announcements from the Parks Department. The Parks tour is Wednesday, September 11th. So save the date, mark your calendars. A few made on that. It starts at 5:15 at Discovery Park. This coming Friday is the last movie night of the summer. Summer camps and classes are wrapping up. And the Fall Activity Guide.
Is out.
Has just come out. So pick yours up. Yeah, on August 9th. And then the Discovery Park grand opening on the 27th went extremely well. And the Parks Department just wanted to pass on their gratitude and appreciation for the council and mayor's support. That's it.
Thank you. Well, thank you. If there's nothing further. I do have a proclamation. And I will ask the team and the coaches if you'll join me at the podium, at the front. If you want, you can come along and face the crowd. Well, we always like to recognize great achievements. And this team standing in front of you, I have a lot of the information. Pardon?
Half the team.
Half the team. Half the team is standing in front of you. But we always appreciate the opportunity to recognize our young athletes. In particular, when their hard work pays off and they go and represent our community to a much larger venue. So congratulations to the team, to their coaches. And I do have two different proclamations. I'm going to read just one of them. The other one includes all your names. And I'll give that to your coach. But the one with the names will be entered into the public record. So if you ever want to impress a girl and impress your family, it will be institutionalized in the minutes of our city council meeting that you were recognized and a day was dedicated in your name. So without, or with that, I'll tell you a little bit about the team in front of you. Whereas the Meridian Cal Ripken Major, 12 U 70s All-Star Baseball Team recently won the 2019 Pacific Northwest Regional Championship. And whereas this victory earned them the prestigious privilege of representing the state of Idaho and competing in the 2019 Cal Ripken Major 70 World Series on August 1st through 10th in Branson, Missouri. And whereas this team going to the World Series builds team spirit, community pride, and allows these young athletes to walk onto the field with a little extra swagger. And whereas the guidance of the coaches helped all team members focus on work ethic, toughness, and desire, which transformed them into a winning team with each player making valuable contributions. And whereas participating in youth baseball gives young people a strong sense of character, teamwork, and confidence, traits that remain with them all through their lives, both on the field and off the field. Therefore, I, Mayor Tammy DeVere, do proclaim August 20th, 2019, as MYB All-Star Champions Day in the city of Meridian and call upon the community to join me in congratulating this teamwork on their remarkable athletic achievement and for representing Meridian so proudly in the recent World Series. I sign this today. And I appreciate the opportunity to honor you and your achievements and congratulate you. So please join me and congratulate them. So would you please introduce each of your players, or maybe they want to introduce themselves? Talk about your position. And then I'd love the coach to make a few comments.
Ken, go ahead.
My name's Henry Downey. And I play first base.
My name is Luke Scott. I play right field and pitcher.
My name's Drew Schumacher. And I play right field.
My name is Colton Maxell. And I play left field.
Jackson McPherson, left field.
Juan Marcos, third baseman pitcher.
Lucas Skinner, catcher.
All right. So my name is Travis Walker. And the other coaches are Bill Scott and Kevin Downey. And we're missing about four or five players tonight. And also the other coach is Travis Cron. Let me tell you what kind of fun we had at Branson. It was amazing to get to that point. These boys have, I hate to use the word sacrifice, but they did. Last four years of their summer was spent on the ball field. And they've achieved some great things. And they've got, it's just really helped them, we believe, as young men, number one. But, you know, they've learned so much. Hard work and dedication really has paid off for them. We rolled into Branson and surprised with the weather. It was really hot and humid, a lot different than here. And but the level of competition was amazing. And the sportsmanship was amazing. And the boys overall had a good turnout. I mean, as far as their performance, we beat a good Alabama team in a walk-off. Drew Schumacher hit one about 300 feet. We're up eight to seven. He a walk-off against a really talented Alabama team. We came close to a couple of national teams. Korea, we lost three to one. But you know what? Almost you're supposed to lose to the country of Korea when you're coming from Meridian, Idaho. And the team from Dominican, again, excellent team. And their coaches were great. And I use my wife for translation. And I speak some Korean as well as another parent on our team. And so we were able to schedule some teams that way. We just, we love these boys. We've loved what they've accomplished. And we expect nothing but great things for them in the future. It's been our pleasure to be able to coach them these past four years. Thank you.
I think you can at least introduce yourselves.
My name is Kevin Downey. I'm an assistant coach.
And my name is Bill Scott. And I'm an assistant coach. I will say this. The city of Meridian was awesome. We reached out to them. And the city of Meridian immediately, Tammy replied right back and offered us to come down. And so that's awesome to be wearing the representative, being a representative of Meridian and having the community come right back at us. So we were also given some pins. And if you know anything about the World Series and what the kids do, they trade pins. And so there are Meridian pins that ended up on kids' lapels from all over the world that said Meridian, Idaho. So that was pretty neat. Thank you.
Well, and thank you for reaching out and letting us know. Oftentimes, we only know about this when the parents reach out and say, our kids have achieved this great thing. And we appreciate that. So I know you probably exchanged your pins. We do have a pin for you tonight as well. So now you can keep it. You don't have to trade it. But we wish you great success. We hope to see you back in this council chambers to celebrate your next great achievement. And to the coaches, being the daughter of a coach, I know how much time, dedication, and inspiration that you share to the kids. Great role models. And we know that the skills they learn on the field do translate to lifetime character traits. So thank you for that. And with that, again, one last round of applause. Okay. Item seven is future meeting topics.
Madam Mayor, there were several sign-ins, but they all indicated they were here regarding item eight G.
Thank you. Okay, item eight, under action items. Item eight A is a public hearing for our 2019 amended budget. Jenny, thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. Tonight, I'm before you presenting our final fiscal year 2019 amended budget. The agenda for tonight is I'm going to go over our three major reporting funds. General Fund, Capital Improvement Fund, Enterprise Fund. Then I'll pause for questions. This is a public hearing. And then we will wrap up with your approval of our fiscal year 2019 final budget. With that, the total city budget is, for fiscal year 19, is $120.2 million. That is up 7.8% from the original budget that was announced around this time last year. So the next few slides, I will go through the changes. Just know that these amendments and these changes have been presented to you by our departments in the past 10 months. This is more of a formal process that we use to notify the citizens and the state of Idaho of our final fiscal year 2019 budget. So the next few slides is more of a review for you. So for our fiscal year 19 total city budget, we have a total of 47 total budget amendments. That is down again 7.82%, about $10.1 million. In our general fund, we are up 1.29%. Capital Improvement Fund, up $1,600, or sorry, down $1,600. And Enterprise Fund is down 16.8%. In our general fund, our original budget was $62.4 million. Our final amended budget is at 63.2. This is up 1.29% overall. And the personnel, capital, and carryforward expenditures percentage changes are there displayed on the graph in front of you. In our general fund, we had a total of 40 total approved amendments. The, these amendments include our Fire Station 6, Rural Fire reimbursement for Fire Station 5, Community Development Mechanical Program, and our carryforward adjustment of $3.3 million. Now I'm going to move to our Capital Improvement Fund. Our Capital Improvement Fund didn't change much. We went down in our carryforward adjustment of $1,600. And this fund had no amendments presented. In our Enterprise Fund, our Enterprise Fund original budget was $65.1 million. We're down 16.8% arriving at $54.1 million. Personnel operating and carryforward expenditures percentage changes are displayed right in front of you. Within our Enterprise Fund, we had seven total budget amendments. That was presented and approved. The headworks upgrade, water meters, and our well 28 water treatment. Enterprise Fund had a carryforward adjustment of $12.5 million. With that, I stand for any questions for our fiscal year 2019 budget.
Thank you, Jenny. Counsel, any questions at this point for staff? Thank you.
Okay. So right now, I'm looking for an approval to establish our fiscal year 2019 final budget of $120.2 million. This will allow legal to present an ordinance in the next couple of weeks for your approval.
Okay, we'll take testimony if there is any. And then we'll ask for counsel action. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, is there any sign-ups?
Madam Mayor, there were none.
Okay, this is a public hearing on our 2019 budget. Is there anyone who wishes to provide testimony on this item? Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Anybody jumping up and down to testify and move we close the public hearing on the fiscal year 2019 amended budget?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the item in front of you. Any discussion? If the motion was to close public hearing, all those in favor say aye.
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 All ayes. Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Move we approve the 2019 amended budget in the amount of $120,267,651.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Clerk, will you call her all?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Milam.
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
Aye. And this will come back to counsel in ordinance form in a couple of weeks. Okay, our next item is item eight B, which is a public hearing for the 2020 budget.
Hello again.
Hello again.
I am going to present our fiscal year 2020 proposed budget of $120.5 million. I'm going to go over our general fund, enterprise fund, and then stand for any questions. And then again, look for your approval of our fiscal year 2020 proposed budget. So the total city budget is $120,000, $120.5 million. The graph on the left depicts the expenditure types broken out by 45% personnel expenditures, operating at 18%, capital at 15%, and our carryforward amounts are at 22%. Now, carryforwards are projects that were appropriated in fiscal year 2019 that will not be completed by the end of the year. Therefore, we will be carrying the remaining budget into fiscal year 2019, or sorry, 2020. The graph on the right-hand side is allocations by department. Police Department is 26%. Fire Department makes up the 15% of the total city budget. The Water and Wastewater Department is displayed at 21% wastewater and 11% water department. Parks at 8%. And the remaining 6% in admin and 5% in community development. Now, I'm going to go through our general fund in more detail. So our general fund proposed budget is at $72.4 million. Here on the graph, on your left, is a breakout by the type. Personnel makes up 55% of our general fund total budget. Operating makes up 18% of that. And our capital is at 12%. How this is divided amongst the departments in general fund, our police department makes up 42% of our general fund budget. Fire is at 25. And Parks is at 14%. Those are expenditures. Now I'm going to move to our projected revenue for general fund. We're projecting our general fund to have, to collect revenue of $62.5 million. Majority of our general fund revenue is property tax, 58%. And our governmental revenue is about 16%. And those are state revenue sharing, liquor, and rural fire revenues. Moving on to our enterprise fund. Enterprise Fund's proposed budget for fiscal year 2020 is $48.1 million. The graph on the left displays the type of expenditures that enterprise fund, or that makes up the enterprise fund. 22% is personnel, 18, sorry, 18% capital and 17% operating. Majority of enterprise fund's budget is allocated to carryforward. Enterprise Fund's carryforward projects, examples are our big expansion project, our headworks, well 28 are the examples of our carryforward budget. Wastewater, sorry, wastewater makes up 52%. Water at 28. Engineering and utility building makes up the remaining 20%. We're going to move through enterprise revenue. Majority of enterprise revenue is made up of utility sales. So our water and wastewater sales. Utility Connection makes up 32% of enterprise revenue. And the remaining nine is our EPA compliance fees, trash billings, and engineering fees and sales of meters. With that, I stand for any questions for fiscal year 2020 proposed budget.
Thank you, Jenny. Counsel, any questions for Jenny at this time? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, any testimony?
Madam Mayor, there are no sign-ins.
Okay. This is a public hearing for our 2020 budget. Is there anyone who wishes to provide testimony on this item?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Wish somebody was here to testify on that. Since nobody is coming forward, I move we close the hearing on the post-fiscal year 2020 budget.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, close public hearing on item eight B. All those in favor say aye.
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 All ayes.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Just a brief comment, because we've got a lot of people in the room. So we'll take a brief advantage of that since there's lots of citizens around. And the process that happened right here is somewhat abbreviated and seems kind of truncated. But just for a little bit of context, throughout the spring, our finance department works with each department and the mayor and council liaisons to develop and craft the base budget and then various enhancements that go with it. We then meet in June, over two days, at workshops where we kind of tear into it a little more in detail, get questions answered. These are all at public hearings. We do it again in July. And then this meeting here as well. This is kind of the tail end of a long, long, long process. So the specifics of each subcategory, of every subcategory, we vet and pull apart through all of that process in a public manner, receiving public input throughout that process, email or at the grocery store to get citizens' input. So this is the tail end, which always kind of catches us odd because there's never, rarely if ever, a single comment. And I think that is due in large part to a lot of the good work that's done in advance by our finance department and the mayor, crafting this budget with everyone's input and being, making it accessible to the public. So while, if you don't know anything about our budget process, this might look kind of weird and really quick. But for us, it is step 27 of a 27-step process. So I thought it would be helpful to provide some context to what is culminating in today's vote.
Thank you, Mr. Borton.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I know if Council President Borton's going to make a motion. So if not, I move that we approve the proposed fiscal year 2020 budget in the amount of $120,525,396.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve our proposed fiscal year 2020 budget. Any discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Surprise. Councilman Palmer has commentary on the budget. I can't support the budget. I have 1.2 million reasons why. I won't go through all of them tonight. I've tried going over them for four years. And I think the most have ever gotten cut out of the budget's been a couple thousand, only because we had a department head who didn't know what it was, that was one item that was in his budget a few years ago. But just a couple of the items that I just can't bring myself to increase your taxes to keep in the budget are $10,000 for a public art consultant. We have in code that we spend 50 cents per citizen up till, we have 100,000 citizens, which we do now, on art in public spaces. It's in our code that that's what we do. Now that we've reached that, we'd like to spend more on art than that $50,000 a year. And so we have about $91,000 built into this year's budget. That means almost 200 of yours and your neighbors' entire Meridian City portion of your property taxes is going just to public art. We have about $600,000 something going to public transit for buses that people aren't riding. There's just tens of thousands in different items and hundreds of thousands in others that we are wasting of your tax dollars. And it is so depressing that nobody looks at it, that we do such a great job of throwing it in there and making it all confusing with all kinds of other stuff, that nobody notices or sees it and comes to comment about it. So, then we feel good about ourselves, just going ahead and voting for it, because nobody came to object to it. So, this is my last year. I'm retiring. So, I pray that, because four of us are being replaced up here, that hopefully we have a future council and mayor that takes more of your hard-earned dollars to heart and realizes what it is that we're spending on.
And I would love to just ask for the question, but I will say that I appreciate our community in supporting the fact that there's more to developing a community than most people think. Building a premier community to live, work, and raise a family is all about safety. It's about our neighborhoods. It's about taking pride in the place that you live. And in our citizen surveys, we do get comments, and people weigh in on where some of those priorities are. Where public transportation may not mean something to one of us, it does mean something to maybe your neighbor. Same with community events, or public art, or parks, or prevention programs. All kinds of things make up this budget. We do appreciate our community does provide us input in a number of different ways. And it's great that we have a council that has a differing opinion that adds to the decision-making process. So, with that, Mr. Clerk, will you please call her all?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
No.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
And for what it's worth, I hope either throughout this process or at some point, there is some lessons learned on what I see as professional decorum. So, I take exception to your comments about not taking the citizens' tax dollars at heart. We went through all of this in painstaking detail over many, many months. And we can have professional disagreements on what might be appropriate for a particular item. But I do take exception to, and can't let your comments stand silent, that we don't take the tax dollars to heart, and we don't take this process either seriously, or it's made confusing. It's not made confusing. We went through this together over many months. So, I strongly disagree with that characterization. Take exception to it. Citizens' tax dollars are important to me, as they are to you.
And I will thank staff. Thank you to the finance department, to all of our departments liaison that do spend a lot of time going over every line item of this process. So, it is lengthy, as Councilman Borton pointed out. And there is a lot of painstaking detail to this. But with that said, I will move on to Item 8C, which is a final plat for H 2019-0077. This has been requested to vacate from the agenda along with Items D and E. And staff, do you want to just give us a brief overview of the requests behind this?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The applicant has some issues to work out with an irrigation easement that runs along the east boundary of the property, adjacent to building lots. And there's been some difficulties with that. So, that's the reason for the request to vacate. It will be back on a future agenda. We just aren't sure which date.
Thank you. And rather than continue it every agenda, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Hey, council, I do need a motion to vacate these from the agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burnt.
I'm going to turn your mic off. Sorry, Dean. Thank you so much for your attention to detail. I greatly appreciate that. I move, Madam Mayor, to move that we vacate Items 8C, D, and E from the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to vacate Items 8C, D, and E from the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
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 I think I had all ayes. Okay? Thank you. Item 8F is final plat for H 2019-0083. And this has a request to continue. Sonya, can you talk to us about this request?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The applicant submitted a final plat that staff wasn't sure was entirely consistent with the approved preliminary plat. So, there's been some discussions back and forth and some changes being made to that plat. So, the applicant just needed another week to make those changes.
Okay. Council, if you feel comfortable with that, I would entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I move that we continue H 2019-0083 to August 27, 2019.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to continue this item to August 27. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes. Good job. Okay. Item G is a public hearing for H 2019-0027. I will open this public hearing. There has been a request to continue as well. This was not posted properly, so it could not be heard tonight regardless. No, yes, it was?
Madam Mayor, excuse me. What I understood was the applicant was not able to attend the hearing this evening.
He wasn't, but he also did.
But he also didn't post the property. Okay, thank you.
We had a couple of reasons not to hear it.
Yes.
I do know there's concern, council, of the September 3 date, because it does follow a holiday weekend. So, I would look for your discussion or motion to when you want to continue this, too.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
For discussion's sake, I will not be here on the 10th. So, I just think that's important that, I'm not saying that I have to be here, but just for council and the public's benefit, that doesn't mean that I will not be able to attend.
Madam Mayor, excuse me if I may. The applicant has also conveyed to staff that they also have another hearing to attend on the 10th of September. So, the next available alternate date, other than the 3rd, would be the 17th.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
The intent of posting is to provide notice and give the public an opportunity to participate. Clearly, there's many here who wish to do so. September 17th seems to be the best date to allow our entire council and mayor to participate, as well as the public. So, with that, I move that we continue H 2019-0027 to September 17th.
I have a motion and a second to continue Item G to the 20, or the 17th of September.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, just a question before you call for the question. We're changing the date with the public hearing. We're going to renotice it. Is that the intention of the motion, also renotice? And who will bear that expense to let the public know the appropriate date and time?
Well, I don't know if the mailings went out, but it was never posted on the site. So, that would still need to be done. We can put it on Nextdoor. Do you know, did we do?
We did, Madam Mayor. We noticed with the Meridian Press and Nextdoor, as well as the postcards. So, if you'd like us to renotice those, we would just need to know your direction.
And certainly, that can be part of the motion. I would appreciate if that is part of the motion to state who is to pay for that.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
It is part of the motion. It is the intent that the applicant cover those costs.
Okay, second agree. Who was the second? Oh, Ann was the second. Second agrees. So, the motion was to continue this to the 17th of September with renoticing in all aspect. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, all ayes. And we apologize for those that came this evening for this. Hopefully, you will share with others the new date for this meeting. So, thank you for joining us tonight. Okay, Item 8H is a public hearing for H 2019-0058. Okay, with clearing the room, I will go ahead and ask for staff comments under Item 8H.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The first application before you tonight is a request for annexation and zoning and a preliminary plat. This site consists of 19.74 acres of land. It's primarily zoned R4 with the east lot, Lot 4, zoned RUT in Ada County, and is located at 1305, 1157, 805, and 905 East Macmillan Road. This property was previously platted as lots 1 through 4, Crestwood subdivision. Lots 1 through 3 were annexed into the city in 2006 with R4 zoning. The comprehensive plan future land use map designation is low-density residential for all of the properties, which calls for three or fewer units per acre. The applicant is requesting annexation and zoning of the eastern 5.19 acres, Lot 4, Crestwood subdivision, of the site with an R4 zoning district. A landscape nursery is currently operating on this piece of the property and is proposed to continue operations in the city until December 31 of 2022, at the latest, in order to sell off their existing inventory. Nursery has been legally operating in the county and was recently approved to operate for an additional five-year period of time. This is classified as a nursery or urban farm and contractor's yard in the UDC, which is a prohibited use in the R4 district. However, because the business is currently legally operating in the county, it would be considered a non-conforming use in the city. As such, the use may continue if deemed appropriate by city council, as long as it remains lawful and is not expanded or extended per the standards for non-conformity. Preliminary plat is proposed, as shown, consisting of 57 single-family residential building lots and six common lots on 19.74 acres of land for the development of single-family residential detached homes at a gross density of 2.89 units per acre, consistent with the low-density residential future land use designation. This property was previously platted as lots 1 through 4, Crestwood subdivision. Lots 1 through 3 were annexed previously into the city. As I mentioned with R4 zoning, there are four existing homes and some accessory structures on this site that are proposed to remain on lots in the proposed subdivision. All other accessory structures are proposed to be removed. Subdivision is proposed to develop in two phases, as shown, with the last phase developing once the landscape business use ends. One public street access is proposed via East Macmillan Road. An existing stub street, North Mooney Falls Way, at the south boundary of the site, is proposed to be extended with development. And a stub street is proposed to the east for future extension. All of the existing homes will take access from local streets within the development, except for one, that at 1035 Macmillan Road, Lot 12, Block 3. And that is this one right here where the arrows are at, which proposes to retain their two driveway accesses by Macmillan. Council approval of a waiver to UDC 11-3A-3 is requested for these accesses to remain. ACHD is requiring the west access to be closed. And that's just a little photo of the existing home and the driveway accesses and the garage there in your lower right. The cul-de-sac on the west end of the site does exceed the 450-foot maximum length standard allowed by the UDC. And that one is this one right here, if you can see my pointer. And that is measured from the near edge of the road here to the center of the cul-de-sac. And they do exceed it by approximately 50 feet. The applicant is requesting council approval of the length as is. However, there is no provision in the UDC to allow the council to grant an exception to this standard. A 25-foot-wide landscape street buffer is required along Macmillan Road, as proposed, containing a 5-foot-wide detached sidewalk. A minimum of 10% qualified open space and one-site amenity is required to be provided with this development. The revised qualified open space exhibit, as shown, depicts 1.96 acres of common area in a children's play structure and micro path to the school site to the south as amenities in accord with UDC standards. Conceptual building elevations were submitted, as shown, for the proposed single-family residential homes. Summary of the commission hearing, the commission did recommend approval of these applications to the city council. Dave Yorgason, the applicant's representative, testified in favor. No one testified in opposition or commented on the application. Written testimony was received from Sharon Reynolds. She feels the growth and traffic congestion is out of control and would like a moratorium placed on building as existing infrastructure can't support the growth. And also, written testimony was received from the applicant's representative, Dave Yorgason, in response to the staff report. And that is part of the public record. Issues of discussion by the commission, ours follows. The applicant's request for council waiver for the existing driveway access by Macmillan Road to remain for the home at 1035 East Macmillan Road until such time as the property redevelops. The cul-de-sac that exceeds the maximum 450-foot length standard in the UDC. Existing landscape business continuing to operate on the parcel proposed for annexation. And finally, timing phasing for construction of the sidewalk in front of the property at 1157 East Macmillan Road. Basically, in Phase 1 altogether, or Phase 2. Commission changes to the staff recommendation. There was an addition of DA provisions, as recommended by staff, with a change to the phasing of the sidewalk along Macmillan Road to allow it to be constructed with each phase of development, rather than all with the first phase. Outstanding issues for city council. The applicant is requesting approval of a council waiver, as I previously mentioned, to UDC 11-3A-3 for the existing driveway access by Macmillan to remain for the property at 1035 East Macmillan until such time as the property redevelops. The commission was in favor of the applicant's request on this item. And second, the applicant's request for the cul-de-sac length that exceeds the maximum standard to be approved as is. And as I mentioned, there is no provision in the UDC to allow council approval of the applicant's request. Staff is recommending the application is continued to a later hearing date in order for the plat to be revised to comply with the revision, as the revision may significantly affect the layout of the plat, unless the applicant has an alternative to present at the hearing tonight. Written testimony, since the commission hearing has been received from Dave Yorgason, the applicant's representative, in response to the commission recommendation. Staff will stand for any questions.
Council, any questions for staff at this time? With the applicant come forward. Good evening. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Name is Dave Yorgason, for the record. 14254 West Pattenburg Drive, Boise, Idaho. And Sonya, can you find my little PowerPoint presentation, please? I'm done moving it. Sorry, I didn't know it did that. While they're pulling it up, I'll just add one comment, Madam Mayor. Thank you for announcing the tabernacle. It sounded like you had a chance to go through it, and I too have done the same. And actually had a chance to be a tour guide a few days ago. And it's a life-changing event for some of us. I appreciate your bringing that up to the public.
Absolutely. It was incredible.
Thank you. I appreciate your mentioning that. Can I drive now, Sonya? Thank you. This is the latest layout that we have for you as a result of the conversations we had with Planning, Zoning, Commission, and staff. I'll just jump forward. I thank staff for their presentation and all the details. I won't over-repete anything, but I do want to touch on some summary highlights. This application is unique in many ways. This is two developers working together. It is two developers, Todd Campbell and myself. Todd's a developer builder. He's also here tonight and available for questions if you have any. Their total site is 57 homes, four of which are existing homes. That's a part of the challenges of working on infill, is working around existing homes. So, there's four existing homes and 53 new home sites. As mentioned, four parcels totaling 20 acres. Three of them are previously annexed in the city. At R4 zone, we're not asking to rezone those. We are asking to annex the eastern parcel. And as mentioned before, it's an existing landscape business with a legal current functioning and recently extended conditional use permit in the county. There'll be custom and semi-custom homes. It'll be a nice addition to the community that we are adding a pedestrian access to the school site southwest corner of the property, as well as adding a children's tot lot within the development. This is infill, which has some challenges. And there's really three primary, one of which we think we've worked through all the details, and that's the existing landscape business. There's a lot of interesting pros and cons to introducing or allowing this to move forward. It really feels strongly that this is the right thing to do. We're actually limiting, instead of being five years, it'll be three years or less to end the business operations. There's actually over, or approximately, 1,000 trees on the property, many of which are grown on-site. You can only remove them either spring or fall, depending upon the type of tree. And so, you just can't move them all at one time. It's based on expected business for the upcoming year. And one and probably two years is inadequate to time that correctly. And so, that's why we've phased this development to be a two-phase development. And so, that, we think we've worked through all these details. We agree with all the conditions as staff proposed and Planning and Zoning Commission approved. And the business owner also agrees to all these conditions as submitted. The two items I'd like to focus on now are access and the design layout, which refers to the cul-de-sac Sonya mentioned briefly ago, is we also are competing with existing homes and the trees in the area. I failed to mention, there's about 100, almost 150 existing trees we're working around in addition to the landscape business trees, many of which we're trying to keep. Some are sick, and we'll take those out, but there's quite a bit of challenge maneuvering that. We agree with the city staff report, except for a couple of changes, and we agree with the ACHD staff report. So, the cul-de-sac, which is really our big item for discussion here tonight. The yellow arrow points to a 50-foot-wide easement that is in the Copper Basin common area. It was recorded on their first phase of their plat. And it says on there, "For ingress egress to adjacent parcel." That's all it says. Which everyone assumes 50 foot for a road, that's adequate for a road to stub through there. And it aligns perfectly with the existing street here to the west. I'll use my little pointer arrow here over here. So, I went and talked to the neighbors, as I was asked to do. Took a long time to organize a meeting, because they weren't real excited to meet, I guess. Finally arranged a meeting early this year, around January, February. Met with their annual homeowners meeting, actually, and met with them. Needless to say, it was a very difficult meeting. I'll just say it was probably one of my top two toughest neighborhood meetings I've ever attended in my career. They were clearly not interested in working with us to have public connection there. So, we reached out and talked to ACHD and said, "Well, what can we do? Can you help us there?" And their legal department researched it and concluded they cannot. It is not dedicated or even stated for public purpose. So, it's on private property and easement. It cannot be used for public purpose without the permission of the private landowner. And the private landowner will not give that permission. We asked if we could buy it. They said, "No. I won't give you all the other discussion points, other than it just cannot happen." And so, because of that, this site, this portion of the site is really constrained. We're working with the existing home. We're removing the access on the home. Currently has front engine access on Macmillan. We're taking that away. In fact, there are many accesses with all four parcels. There's like six or seven total accesses, and we're all done. We'll be down to two someday, maybe even one. But with that in mind, we're really site constrained. This western side cannot go west, can't go south because of the school, and it can't go north because of the existing home. And so, because of that, as Sonya properly mentioned, the cul-de-sac length is too long. We recognize that it's 450, longer than 450. I've built subdivisions in the city, including one that was about a mile east of this site called Settlers Bridge. And it too has some site constraints. I'm thinking of a canal, that we could only get one bridge across the canal. So, we ended up having a cul-de-sac that was much, much longer than 500 feet. And in that case, the fire department expressed concern, and we ended up putting a emergency access out into Macmillan in that location. ACHD is fine with this cul-de-sac length. They approved it in their staff report. City of, all the other cities in this jurisdiction, in the county, would be fine with a 500-foot-long cul-de-sac. But Meridian Planning Code says 450. We're asking for your help tonight to approve this at 500 feet. So, just a quick summary. We're asking that condition A2B be allowed the western cul-de-sac per the design. We worked with, we're working with an existing problem because of the site constraints coming from all sides, northwest and south. I just can't accomplish something there. We're reducing the accesses, including the one from the existing home. I've looked at a lot of alternative designs, and we either lose lots, or we lose lots and have more common driveways, which I don't like, because that means more people want to park out there on the street, and there's no place on a common driveway, so it'll be probably a parking concern for our future residents. It's a challenge for us. We recognize that, but we're, hopefully you will help us tonight by deleting condition A2B and allow that cul-de-sac as we propose. Lastly, and I'll just touch on this real briefly. The address at 1035 East Macmillan, Boyd Hill has lived at that place. It's his home site. He built it back in the 70s when the home was first built. Raised his family there. In fact, I grew up with several of his kids at that place. And Boyd's now in his 80s, 82, 83 years old. Wants to stay at that house until he's no longer able to. But he wants to keep his address and keep the access. Originally, we did ask for two accesses per the existing design with the roundabout. I'm sorry, with the two accesses shown, not a roundabout, but the drive-through. And ACHD was fine with that, because they even see that as a safe means, because it's easy in, drive-through, drive-out. And one of the accesses where the red arrow shows aligns with the Larkwood Street, which is a key point here. But staff has asked that we remove one of the accesses, and we have agreed to that. And so, we ask that we be allowed to have one access that aligns with Larkwood Street, which has been allowed and granted, I know, by this council many times. I know it's not preferred, but it'd be for while Boyd lives in this home. And that is our request. And so, in quick summary of that, ACHD and the Planning, Zoning Commission both seem supportive of that concept of only one access, because it does align with the Larkwood Street. And so, our request would be to delete condition A2D or to just restate it, to modify the condition, allow it until the existing access, until the property's redevelops. We'd be fine with either of those, if that's the direction the council wants to go. In quick summary, again, these are two developers working together. Not always happens, but it is happening here. We're working together to try to bring infill development together, trying to work through, maneuver all the challenges which this site poses. It'll be a quality and compatible development to the surrounding neighborhoods. But we do ask for your approval tonight with the two changes that I've discussed tonight, to delete those two conditions or modify as you seem fit. Thank you for your time, and I would like to stand for any questions and even dialogue if appropriate pertaining to that western cul-de-sac. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, staff. So, these situations that we run into on occasion, where it makes perfect sense to grant a waiver or whatever we might need to do, where code literally doesn't give council the ability to do it. Council can change code, but council can't make modifications or waivers of code sometimes in the moment. How, what, does staff have any objection? If code were to allow this, is there any reason why that configuration is concerning? Or is it simply just because we literally can't do it in this moment?
Madam Mayor, counsel. Obviously, because code prohibits it, we can't allow it. But it's probably more of a question for emergency services. I would direct to fire department.
Happy anniversary.
Yes. Thank you, Sonya. So, the cul-de-sac, I think, won't make that much of a difference for fire, as long as the cul-de-sac itself is built the appropriate size, 96 feet minimum with no parking on it. Getting around the corner, bless you, is not an issue for fire.
Madam Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Palmer.
Then the question, I'm not sure who to direct it to, is how quickly can we change that to allow council to make a decision on things that make sense like this?
I think staff probably is thinking the same thing.
So, Madam Members of the council, if you recall, we had a project before you a few months ago that had a prohibition for storage units in that type of development. So, that applicant then filed a request for a code change. It went through the Planning and Zoning Commission, as is required. He came back in front of you for that project, and he basically put that project on hold while he did that. It takes, I'm going to say, two and a half to three months. And he said four. So, somewhere about three months is about the process it would take to change the code to alter the standards that already exist.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
So, as much as I'd love to just say, "Yeah, obviously, that makes sense." And what else are you going to do? Put a road through the guy's house? You can't. Does the few months delay so we can fix this, so that then hopefully in the future, council has the authority to make decisions? I don't know what else to do, though.
Madam Mayor, was that a question to me?
Yes.
I don't see anyone else dying to answer it.
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Palmer. I don't know the history as to how other projects got approved specifically. Then maybe the code just changed between then and now, the 450-foot length. I don't know. I don't track every single, although I track quite a bit of your code changes. I don't recall the timing of when all of them, specifically that one, would have changed. The western half of this property is Todd Campbell's. Just being wide open with my councilmember friends here. So, he needs to be part of this discussion. I appreciate your support, if that's what I heard from one member of the council here, for some kind of solution. It's just a question of timing, is what I think I just heard.
Madam Mayor. Oh, sorry.
I had a thought, but before I go there, maybe there's another suggestion. Madam Mayor, maybe one answer is we could look at breaking this up into three phases. And we could run that as a second phase while we're trying to get this through the process, recognizing that we have to meet that condition or modify the code. I don't hear any jabs or barbs from my right shoulder yet, so I don't know if I'm off pace yet. I have to check with Mr. Campbell. But I don't know, recognizing the timing I just heard you say, I think we could go through the process. And I don't know if that's a possibility of writing the condition in that way, where we would work with the city to find a way to give the council that flexibility. I know that my two landowners are not excited about waiting three or four months, unfortunately.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Nary, I know this might give you heartburn, but can we approve something against code contingent on it complying with code by the time it's constructed?
So, Madam Members of the council, Councilmember Palmer, no. But we could, I, part of this is an annexation, which isn't contingent upon that. Really, the only issue in regards to this block length is the preliminary plat that's being proposed for that section. So, I think that's really the issue. You still, you still could go forward with most of this project. The preliminary plat would be problematic today, based on what it's drawn, because it's not complying with code. We can't presume the code will be approved. That's my concern on approving something contingent on something else happening, in case it weren't to happen. So, that's the reason we couldn't do it that way. I don't know, from the planning's perspective, on how we would, at this juncture, go forward with the annexation and zoning and the preliminary plat for the other two phases that aren't contingent upon the block length issue. And then, an application's going to follow from Mr. Yorgason or Mr. Campbell in regards to the code change to allow 500-foot block lengths. I'm assuming, without knowing from Chief Bornjorno, there is some point that it's too long. I don't know what that is. But I think that's the only way I could see moving forward with this application to keep it on track, is to separate that piece from the preliminary plat. But we can still move forward with the annexation and the preliminary plat on Phases 1 and 2.
So, Madam Mayor and City Council, and Dave and Sonya. I was just pulling up my comment sheet for roadways. And that magic number that you're looking for is 750 feet. Once you get over 750 feet, you have to have special approval. So, what it says for dead-end fire apparatus roads that are between 500 and 750 feet in length, the roadways have to be built to Ada County Highway District cross-section standards and have a clear driving surface of 26 feet and width available at all times. And shall have no parking on both sides of the street. So, that's when you get in that 500 to 750 range.
Madam Mayor, I'm familiar with that specifically. I don't need to talk about all the other cities' codes, but yours is the shortest. For whatever reason, I'm not here to debate why you came to that number, but recognizing that's who we're working with today. I know that 450 is not a safety issue. It's just, it was a planning determination at some point by the city. I heard maybe another question. I don't know if there's more questions.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
Somewhat of what Dave proposed was something I was going to ask. So, that piece is somewhat addressed. But I guess the second piece was for, for staff, Sonya or Bill. Dave indicated that, you know, cul-de-sacs over 450 have been approved before. Is that something you're able to recall? And if so, I again hate putting you on the spot, but what were the findings to allow that, then, that we aren't able to rely on today?
Madam Mayor, members of the council. To my knowledge, the code has not changed. It's something that council may have approved against the code without any findings supporting it. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Nary. I can't think of any specific projects that exceeded the cul-de-sac length, but...
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I don't recall specific detail on that, so I couldn't tell you, one, two, or how many projects exist out there like that. I don't know.
Madam Mayor, if I could add one more for your consideration. I read a lot of your code over the last few days, and I don't memorize code very well. It's not my expertise, Mr. Borton, maybe better than me. However, I did notice in some sections of code where it references if there's site constraints. And that's what this site has. Now, specifically, that site constraint language referred to topography. Maybe it's hillside or some other types of constraints where that was recognized. If I had a code number, I'd give it to you, Mr. Nary, but I don't have it with me right now. But there's some references to street lengths or access lengths because of that. This site has that. It has those site constraints. And so, if you're looking for a finding, I don't know if that gives you what you need. But we just, we can't make that work. I've looked at so many different ways to come in, move in the road, coming in just south of the existing house, the second house, and bending the cul-de-sac the other direction. It actually made it worse, not better. As the fire chief mentioned, chief, I guess is your title for now, mentioned that we have a common driveway length, which at the end of the cul-de-sac is at that length of 150 feet, plus, or maybe minus a foot or two. We're certainly willing to extend the common driveway all the way through to Macmillan, if that helps. But I don't know if that really helps the end of the day. Settlers Bridge was over 800 feet. If I had measured it today, I would have, I almost want to tell you it's 1,000 feet. I mean, it was substantially longer cul-de-sac than 450 or even 750 feet, which is why that emergency access was put in. That subdivision is about a mile east of this, or less, of this location on Macmillan. So, we're trying to find an answer, and maybe you're telling me you can't. I understand. I'm just, hopefully you can help us. I'm just, hopefully, you can help us. And if that means we try to find a way to accept these conditions, but then we have the opportunity to come back with modified conditions if we can get that section of the code changed, I don't know if that even is an option, but I know that my landowners are not willing to wait any longer, unfortunately. Oddly enough, the way the stub roads work to the south, the one that's to the south property, straddles those two properties. So these get developed together, is how that works. The property on the far west, well, all three of them, they're already in the city limits, which is another interesting fact to this, is it would have been approved with a current subdivision on it, but due to the downturn, it didn't move forward.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
Dave, I'm only kind of guessing by the temperature up here, that selling us on the length isn't really the issue, that we, I think if we could vote on that, I would guess that we're, you're probably unanimous, that we all support that in this particular circumstance. And again, it just comes down to what we can and cannot do. So we have to follow the law, unfortunately. So I'm loving all of the ideas of, you know, can we do this, can we do this. Personally, I feel like we just kind of have to give this to Mr. Neri to guide us through what really we can do and, willing to do this, it may not be able to work out today for this particular design. But again, if we can do, get part of it done so you can get going, and then you have to change the code and bring it back, unless there is anything else. I just don't want you, I feel like you're selling us, and I'm pretty sold. I get it. It makes sense, and I would vote for it, but not if I can't.
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Mylum, I appreciate that, and I think I understand where all of you are coming from here. We're not asking for a denial, that's for sure.
Okay.
Make that really clear. We're just asking for you to...
We're far away from that so far.
Thank you. We're just asking for you to approve what you can approve.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Just to cut to the chase, right, we're stuck. So my thought, when I first got to this stage, is almost an apology, because this should have come up two months ago, and you could have run a parallel application with this. So why it's, I don't even know how it got through P&amp;Z, without this being forced to say, we've got to solve this. So we can do a couple of things. I mean, it could, for example, it continue to week to see if there is any site constraint exception concept. It doesn't sound like there is, but to do it right now is kind of tricky. But it's one week. If your crew and our legal department and planning can find something that gets everyone where they need to be, you uncover that in a week quicker than tonight. And if that's not possible, and it necessitates the code change application to run, then you're stuck. And I think the last one, we continued for, you get like a three-month continuance and let them all catch up. Because if we are stuck, we're stuck. See, if it's not, we just don't have any choice to do anything else. And my risk trying to come up with something tonight on the dais, probably not the best way to craft. And that's my initial thought of a week, to at least let people chew on it. Should have happened thirty days ago.
Madam Mayor.
Sorry.
Excuse me, if I may. To clarify, Councilman Borton, this is not a new issue. We have met with the applicant back in February fourteenth at the earliest, and it was written on the pre-application meeting notes, and we did discuss it with the applicant at that time. So, and it was in the staff report to the commission as well, so it is not a new issue. The applicant's been fully aware of this issue since the very beginning.
But I guess, then we should change our process somehow to, you can't even get to a public hearing. I mean, if you have an application that isn't legal and we're not lawfully allowed to approve it, what are we doing? And maybe that's a conversation for another day.
But I think that's also what staff points out, too.
But, Madam Mayor, to improve our process, maybe we add some element that says, if that circumstance ever exists, you don't get a hearing. You can't. You're done. Because it forces the conversation earlier with an applicant and our staff to come up with any possible solution, and if there's not, then at least you know earlier. I mean, if it's bad news, the earlier you know it, the better. So I'm not saying you didn't raise it, but our process allows this to get to us, and that's not fair to staff. You're working through all these, knowing we're going to get to a dead end here. The applicant knows we're going to get to a dead end, so...
Madam Mayor, if I could just add, no, I'm not faulting staff at all. I didn't really think it was an option to run a code change, maybe I didn't think that one through. But the other thought I have is, I know we're in a public hearing, and if you want to let the public comment, there may be a couple of comments here, and then I'll come back and see if we have an answer at the end, if that's okay.
Madam Mayor.
Thanks, Dave.
Ms. Mylum.
Another note, I really like the playground. Just want to point that out. Very nice.
Madam Mayor, that's not a surprise comment. Thank you, Councilmember Mylum.
I know. I'm shocked. Usually she doesn't.
It's exceptional. Yeah, I like it.
Thank you. Thank you. We are trying. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Clerk.
Madam Mayor, there is one sign-in, and I apologize for the name if I get it wrong, Dr. Rand Spiewak.
You got it.
Good evening. Thank you for joining us. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Randy Spiewak. I live at fourteen-fifty-eight East Loyalty Street in Meridian, between McMillan, Eustick, off of Locust Grove, in the Heritage Commons subdivision. I retired back in two thousand and ten, was a chief financial officer and college president in Florida. We moved here because this is a wonderful city, and I agree with the mayor stating that when you put your budget together, and I had two-hundred-and-ninety-million-dollar operating budgets, and you spend as much time, if not more, than my staff did at the university, but I do appreciate what you all do. I serve here, the number of voluntary positions. One of them is, we call them ditch riders. They also call them irrigation managers. And I manage, volunteer my time managing the Parkins North Irrigation Lateral, number fourteen, which is from Eagle Road to Meridian, right through the middle of those subdivisions between McMillan, or Eagle Road to Meridian, between McMillan and Eustick. The last four major parcels on our subdivision are these four, that would make up this, the twenty acres, that would make up the subdivision. These folks came to us to talk about how we'd work that out. They were so easy to work with, to try to figure out how to protect all of the six-hundred-and-ninety homeowners to the north of them, upstream. And we're still working on some ways to make it more efficient. In looking at the city agenda and realizing there were two things on there of question, I thought I'd speak to one, and I'd like to speak to both. First, Boyd Hill. Boyd is the gentleman, he's eighty-five years old, who lives on McMillan, ten-thirty-five. Wife passed away, I think, about four years ago. He will remain on that property probably till he passes away. Giving him access to McMillan and keeping that address is awful important to a gentleman that is, an elderly gentleman. We thought we were going to lose Boyd last Christmas because of his health, but he's hanging in there. This was just, we thought this meeting would go to nine tonight, and that's way past his bedtime. So I promised Boyd I would come and talk to you. Boyd taught me everything I know about the irrigation lateral. He managed it when it was open ditches, all those years back, fifty years ago. I think nineteen forty, he's been there forty-seven years. Nineteen seventy-three, I think he bought the land. So approving that would be really special, at least until he passes on, and then do whatever you need to do with the exit onto McMillan. I asked him, called him today, I said, was that a paved road when you bought your land, or was that still gravel? He said, well, it was a skinnier paved road, but it did have asphalt. He has a circular driveway currently. And then I talked with Mr. Jorgensen and was curious about the cul-de-sac issue. I live in Heritage Commons. We have two cul-de-sacs. We have one which is the northern end of Quinzer and the southern end of Colburn. Both are over six-hundred feet long. This council approved those with Dave Turnbull and Brighton Corporation back in two thousand and three. If that ordinance existed, then the council took some action to approve it. It has not been a problem. Chief Bornjorno has been out to our subdivision. In fact, we were the first HOA that he inspected our clubhouse, and I think we came away with flying colors. And he didn't say anything about our cul-de-sacs being a problem of his trucks getting through, and we've had no problem. I strongly encourage you to take action and approve that. So those two items, I wish, I support and wish you would approve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay.
Is there anyone else who would like to provide testimony on this item?
Good evening.
Hello, Denise Lepier, six-seven-zero-six North Selvia Way. Yeah, I could not miss an opportunity to say something good. Okay? Right, Trey? First of all, Ty, thank you for looking after the taxpayers. I always appreciate that. You do a great job, and I always appreciate you taking that hard look at that. So let me say all the things that I think are really good about this application. One, I think they were very thoughtful on the transition for the properties down at the bottom, you know, to line them up and transition them. The open space located in a bigger open chunk opposed to misfit spread throughout the neighborhood, that's really good. Access to the school with a pathway, looking after safety, that's another great thing. Not asking for a step-up, yay, you know, what can you say? Great looking, great that they're looking at keeping mature trees. That's fantastic. As far as the double driveway, I think you have an avenue to go do conditional language that says remove the second access upon remove, upon redevelopment. Great option. As far as the cul-de-sacs, I personally like the cul-de-sacs over the shared driveways. Never been a fan of the shared driveways. I think they add complexity into a neighborhood. They cause people to park in front of other people, block languages, and I know Ty and I have had differences on that, but I'd much rather see a cul-de-sac. I noticed Bill looked like he was going to pull the mic over to say something about the cul-de-sac. I'd really like to hear if he has more insight into the cul-de-sac issue and if it's been approved in the past. In addition to that, I think it's much better to have an alternative compliance or variance in a special case, and this is where they come in really nicely, opposed to going back through and doing code changes. So, you know, this is not something we really want to do a code change on, so I do want to hear what Bill has to say. But overall, I like the thoughtfulness, and I like what they're proposing, so.
Thank you. Mr. Neri, have we used variances in the past for block length?
Madam Members of the council, I think we've had variances in regards to block length in the past, and then we changed the code. So we had issues about the block length, not having it broken up by a street or a pathway or something else, and then we did change the code because of that. So we did grant those while we were in the midst of changing those, and that was about fifteen years ago. I've looked, to be honest, and this is just anecdotal, and I'm not using this as testimony, you can look yourself, but I'm looking in the square mile, and I can't find any cul-de-sacs that are six-hundred feet long. I don't know if we've granted any. I don't, I'm not aware of it. I'm not saying it didn't happen, and it couldn't have happened, but under our code, there is no variance attached to this particular type of use. Mr. Jorgensen's right. You do have provisions in your code talking about hardship. It is related to variances, or it is related to waivers, and you've had some of those, but it is specifically spelled out on your code allowing you to do that based on those kinds of findings. It isn't in this code. So you can't simply just waive all codes because that's what they're requesting. Again, I'm not trying to make Mr. Jorgensen, he did indicate, I mean, they would have to lose a lot to make the block length work. So that is an alternative that they've considered, but I would agree with planning. This is an issue that's not new. This is just an option, Mr. Jorgensen, which to present to you as a proposal, knowing that the staff has said there is nothing in the code that allows that.
Madam Mayor, City Council, over here. Voice out of nowhere. Mr. Neri, I am familiar with the cul-de-sac that Mr. Jorgensen talked about in Settlers' Bridge, because I remember driving down it going, who approved this? It's bad. Because it's actually a double, it's a double cul-de-sac, and they're not even cul-de-sacs. The road just ends. It's very, very poorly done. Don't, before my time, but I know exactly what he's talking about, and it's not a good thing. I will tell you that.
Phil, did you have any comment?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, happy to oblige Denise, but certainly I was going to chime in and say, yes, we've done it through a variance process and through the PUD process back in the early two thousands.
Back in the day.
Back in the day, yeah. And so that's why you will see those circumstances out there throughout the community. But to my knowledge, recently, we have not, we don't have a waiver process to cul-de-sac lengths at this time in code. We did clean that up on a previous code change back in two thousand and ten or two thousand and eleven. We got burned up in Spurwing on one of the, I did a final plat up there as part of Spurwing Greens. It's now called Spurring Rim, and it's a long cul-de-sac. And it's because the way the code was written at that time, if you had a ninety at the block face, then it extended the cul-de-sac length, so it was approved on a technicality, basically, so we went and changed the code after that occurred.
Thank you. Any further testimony? Hearing none. Mr. Jorgensen.
State your name again for the record. Dave Jorgensen. And for the record, I appreciate those that came and supported the project. Don't always get that, so thank you. Stream Place is the name of the street, Joe, and I won't go on the record and say who designed it. And then it was not me. Off the record, I'll tell everyone here if you really want to know. Doesn't matter. It's in place. And it was because of site constraints, because of the long narrow of property due to the canal that was there. And yes, it's probably close to a thousand feet, is my guess. We're trying to strategize options for the council's consideration. Of course, our preference is that you approve it. I hear you loud and clear that your hands are tied. I'm still going to ask. Maybe another option, because if we can't move this forward, we may have to just not buy it. So I don't know what would happen if we have this project approved and then we don't bring it forward. It would be excluded, and then we'd come back at a later date as a new plat. It's not our first choice, but that'd be one of our considerations, if it just gets approved as the conditions are written. One question I don't know the answer to, so maybe staff or the city attorney can help. If we have a set of conditions of approval, and then we come back later with a code change request, and I don't even know what I'm asking, if it's five-hundred feet, or if it's just for alternative compliance or variance, or whatever that might be based on hardships, can we change our conditions of approval with that same application, and call that Phase Two or Phase Three? Once the conditions are in place, is that an option? I think it is, but I don't know the answer to that. So I would look to some guidance there. I don't know that waiting a week is going to work, because we looked at so many options. I don't, we've proposed the best option. I think Councilman Borton asked the question if a week would work, and we have looked at seven or eight different options in that narrow little area, and really, this is by far the best option. There's too many other negative consequences, so that isn't why. I try to bring solutions whenever I come to meetings and challenging situations like this, and have worst scenario, two or three, would you think of these? That doesn't exist for this site, unfortunately. So it probably won't get developed, possibly, unless we can work through some other solution through the alternative compliance or code change, whatever staff would like us to do in the future, but we'll quickly turn around application. I appreciate the comments that were made. If I had thought about it, I'm not going to blame anybody but myself. If I had thought about it, I would have run another application consistent with this one, to find some solution. But we didn't think of it, so I'll just say that. So my ask tonight is you approve the project. I do ask, the easy one, I think, is to retain the single access to ten-thirty-five East I do ask, the easy one, I think, is to retain the single access to 1035 East McMillan for Boyd Hill's place, while he still lives there. And whether it's until it redevelops is what is typical language, or just delete the condition, we're fine with either one. And then the second is, is if it's, if it's appropriate to approve it as is, great, but if we need to approve it with a recognition as this would be developed as a third phase, which gives us the time to come back to have a concurrent development, which would allow us to modify the conditions of approval, depending upon timing, who knows, it may run so fast, I don't have that optimism, but we'll turn it right around. So those are my rambling asks. As a conclusion, I'll stand for any questions.
I think just by that summary by Mr. Jorgensen, you see why he's here tonight and it hadn't been resolved before now, he's still asking you to approve it.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Vorton.
The thought, I appreciate that. You're in a box, you're doing good work. The idea for the week wasn't on any redesign solution, was, you know, what you just described, for example, to give people, you know, some days to think about it, find an exception, see if there's some language or some out for you, I agree, it's a great project, but you're stuck, so that was the idea of what a week might do.
So Madam Mayor and Councilman Vorton, if that's what the intent of the week is, we can play with a week, I can't play with three months, if that makes sense to you.
Well, and Madam Mayor, but that might be the consequence of, after a week, you might learn that, in fact, you are boxed in, unfortunately, but if that's the case in a week, we would be presented with, I'm stuck, the only path, if there's one that I'm choosing is a variance application perhaps, or a code change, and here's what I'm going to do, here's how long it's going to take, or you choose not to, but at least we're not trying to figure it out up here. Heck, maybe you find some solution that doesn't necessitate a second application. So it seemed to be worth the short delay to, hopefully at least you'll say, you'll know, if there's a path out, it's this, like it or not. Spent some time now talking about it specifically, and whether it's variance code change or number three. That's my thought on the week. Madam Mayor, one question on the, I don't know, what does, what does redevelopment mean in the context of the house and the two driveways? Is it a, the house gets tearing down, title transfers to a new owner, because it may be another 100 years.
Madam Mayor and Councilman Vorton, it could be all the above. It's not uncommon to put, and I won't speak for you as the attorney, but I know it's not uncommon to put condition on a property, so that when it sells, it's on the deed, or it's recorded against the property, so that any buyer knows that when they buy it, they now have to take access off the back, for example, or meaning through the cul-de-sac, if that's what this direction wants to be. Typically, it might be in the form of redevelopment, so that would be, so the city could even see it, if there's ever a redevelopment, meaning an application that comes forward to say, split that lot into two lots, then that would be an instant red flag that pops to the world, including the staff and the council here, that you know that, okay, well it's now going to become two lots, or whatever it becomes, then now you have to take access off the cul-de-sac. And that's very clear, it's recorded on the property, so that's what my experience would be, because it's, but that's just a suggestion.
And that's the easy one. Trickier one is a grandson inherits it and lives there with his family for 40 more years. If there's a concern about two driveways, maybe that's a DA discussion on what kind of language we use to have some teeth to redevelopment means.
Yeah, and Madam Mayor and Councilman Vorton, I would say, because this aligns with Larkwood Street, that changes the game also. If it was offset by whatever distance, 100 feet or something, that's, that's not appropriate, which would lead to safety concerns, that's, but that's different here. It aligns, and so I, it's your decision, but I personally wouldn't feel like that's a safety concern. It's just a comfort where the city wants to restrict accesses.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
For what it's worth, even though it's a minor issue compared to the other issues we're trying to deal with, my preference would be as long as it's a single property to maintain both entrances, ensuring that there's never any reason for somebody to try to back out onto McMillan, because there's two entrances doesn't mean there's twice as much traffic coming in and out of there, it's still one residence, and as long as that stays the case, I think we want, would want to make it as easy as possible to avoid somebody trying to back out onto McMillan, if we can just figure out the other issue.
Madam Mayor, excuse me, may I comment?
Yes.
I have several items I'd like to address. The driveway's in question, ACHD is not allowing the western driveway, so that's not something that the city can just override. Second, if the council ends up allowing a condition for the applicant to comply with a possible later amendment to the text of the UDC on the block length, or excuse me, not block length, cul-de-sac length standard, if you could please specify that in your motion to amend the condition a little bit to specifically say that. And I also did find Settlement Bridge, how that was approved at the time, and that was through a planned unit development, which did allow variations to the dimensional standards at that time. They were allowed as a condition of increasing the cul-de-sac length to do so, but they did have to construct an emergency access. And that, that's another alternative that staff has discussed with the applicant in this case, pulling the cul-de-sac back 50 feet here, further to the south, and then extending, because that would in turn make the length of the common driveway exceed the maximum length standard there of 150 feet. But if the fire department would approve an emergency access and, and council would out to McMillan Road, that, that is a possible alternative that would ensure compliance with the cul-de-sac length. That does require special approval from the fire department.
I guess all of these comments just, I think, support continuing this a week and, having the applicant work with the city and on some of these various ideas and bring those back to, to council.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
What a scenario such as that then work, that maybe they come back with the adjustment that none of us are, were okay with, but it's none of our preference, and then we work on, he could work on changing code, and then when the code's changed, before he's ever constructed the thing, could adjust, get approval on adjusting the plan back to this.
I think they can work through all kinds of different ideas and see what works best coming forward.
Madam Mayor, we are fine with the one week delay, if that's what's the direction here. I appreciate Sonia's direction, that's one of five of my options in my head. There's negative implications to that, assuming fire approves it, which I think they would, but I won't speak for them, to the secondary access or the emergency access, there's other consequences to lots that doesn't work for us. Doesn't matter, we're happy to work with staff for the week and come back next week, if that's what you want us to do.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, because it seems like a tennis game right now. The ball's in your court.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I move to continue item 8H to the 27th of September.
August?
August. Sorry, I had, I had September pulled up on my.
Wow.
Second.
I have a motion in the second to continue this item to the 27th of August. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Meyer.
One more thing to throw out there to, and I don't know if it could be considered a hardship because of the blocked access from Copper Basin, which would have allowed you to do this without being that long, so that's one way to look at it as well.
Item 8I is a presentation on Citywide Fee Updates by Brad. Good evening.
Good evening, Brad.
I have the wonderful opportunity to talk to you guys about another riveting topic in Citywide Fee Schedule, so.
It is riveting.
Completely. I, I, I'm happy to talk about it. I'd refer you to the public record. Councilman Kavner, thank you for bringing up and having me change that or send that to you guys. Hopefully you have that, you can refer to that. I'm going to present a summary of what those changes are. There are 57 changes that exceed the 5% threshold. That's either positive or negative, either way, there's 57 of those. We have 5%, oh sorry, there are five fees that fall under the 5% threshold, which don't require the public hearing, and then we have one fee name change, we're simply changing a non-sufficient fee to a returned item fee. On the 57 fee changes that are greater than 5%, 52 of those fees are related to Public Works. Those are city water, like hydrants, meters, those things are pass-through, so they're just basically what it's charging us, we're passing that through. The five remaining fees are, belong to fire. Four of those are reductions. Those are a part of a joint agreement that we have with other districts, and those are actually reduction in the fee because of the, the fee structure of that agreement. There is one increase on a fire fee that's related to inspections, and that just represents, you know, the cost of inspectors' time and staff to, to cover that. Those are the fee updates for existing fees. We have some new fees, I'll call this quasi-new fees. We have five false alarm fees. These have been charged typically or historically with the police department, they've been housed there. Recently, some city code has changed to allow us to house these on the, and separate these on the city schedule, fire's wanting to do that, so we are doing that, that's why we're here today. I have one fee, that's a fence permit fee. Caleb talked about this earlier as part of an innovation, as part of our, our Peak Academy, that was, allows us to reduce the fee from $55 down to $10, so it's a win for our citizens. We have a hydrant meter, this is a true new fee, something we haven't seen in the past. And we have an above-ground storage tank fee, which is a fire fee that fire's having me bring forward, that is also a new fee. So really, it's, we have two technically new fees, the rest are, have existed in some form or fashion. Next steps, we need to publish over the next two weeks, the Citywide Fee Changes, and I've gathered these over the last year, so we'll publish these, have a public hearing on the, hopefully on the 10th, where we can, you know, get public input and approval. And, you know, if approved, these fees would be effective October 1st. With that, I'll take any questions you may have. I appreciate the questions that I have received, and by all means, in the next few weeks, as we're doing the, the publishing and that, feel free to reach out to me, I'm happy to answer, do whatever I can to help you guys out, so stand for any questions you have.
Thank you, Brad, and great summary. Counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
Thanks on the quick turnaround, getting that to us, I appreciate it. Hard for us to sometimes follow on computers.
If you can speak into your mic, so Dean doesn't have to give you the hairy eyeball.
Sorry, I thought I was, I just saying thanks, and it is sometimes challenging for us on our tablets or our home computers to follow it, and so getting it back to us was appreciated.
Thank you. Yeah, happy to help.
Any other questions? Comments? Thanks, Brad.
Thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
So we'll put this out to be published.
Great, thank you so much.
And notice.
Have a good night, guys.
Thank you. Okay, item 8J is in front of you for a request from Republic Services for their rates. Rodney, Steve, nice to have you here. Sorry we had you wait so long.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Counsel. Rodney Remling with Republic Services, a finance manager at 11101 West Executive in Boise, Idaho. You have in your, in your packet there, a request to increase rates, which is an annual request, it's based on the contract, it comes, it's based on June, on the change in CPI. The change is limited to 90% of the change in CPI, which this year is 2.47%. I would just say that we worked extensively with SWAC and with city, city staff on this, but I'll let Steve tell you about that.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, thank you for this opportunity. I really want to express our thanks as a commission to legal, to finance, to Public Works for doing all the legwork to make sure that all of these requests were vetted very thoroughly, and so talking about them individually, as discussed, the Consumer Priced Index Adjustment, the SWAC considered that and felt that it was appropriately reflected, and went ahead in recognizing that it is a contractual thing, did recommend that it was ready for your consideration with a due pass recommendation. We were very happy with the household hazardous waste collection portion of this, which actually reduces the fees associated with that by a slight amount, but we easily came to the recommendation it was ready for your consideration and give the due pass recommendation on that The, it was a request by the commission in discussing the recycling fee portion of this, that the amendment which you passed last year, which was a one-year amendment for recycling processing fees, be extended for another year. The logic behind that is that we're still dealing with what effectively is a survey that is 20 years old, that the citizens of Meridian are supportive of recycling, and staff in Public Works is currently conducting a survey of the citizenry to find out the extent of their support of recycling and recycling fees. We expect to have those results within a month or two, and so going to that particular item, the fees necessary to continue recycling as they are right now, Republic has requested that the, that fee be increased by 10 cents, with no current information to change where we were at, which is that the citizenry supports recycling as it currently is, we felt that we, as a commission, could say this was ready for your consideration with a due pass recommendation. So I stand for questions, if you have any questions on what the commission did and how it concluded what it did.
Thank you, Steve. Counsel, questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Neri.
Madam Members of the council, I just wanted to add to, in your packet you'll see an addendum for that portion regarding the recycling. Tom caught this morning from Public Works that there were some number, numerical errors in that, so we'll make those corrections. This was just for your information at this point, because we wouldn't need this addendum until these fees get adopted, so we'll keep it on the agenda when you have the fee hearing to then do this amendment at the same time. But we'll make the corrections as necessary, have Republic re-sign it, and then bring it back.
Thank you.
Rodney, anything further?
So, no, I think Steve summarized it very well. I would just say that the household hazardous waste is not subject to CPI, we do reconcile that. Last year, we remitted some money back to the, to the city. This year, there's a 4,200 coming back the other way, we're just going to leave that on the books and consider it as we move forward. So the increase to residential households is 41 cents, 33 cents for CPI, 10 cents for the recycling charge, which Steve mentioned, and then a 2 cent reduction in household hazardous waste, so, and there are no new fees.
That's great. Steve, thank you to SWAC and for vetting this and, and working with staff on, on the various complexities of this constantly evolving recycling fund, but also in looking at our rate schedules. Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve.
Thank you.
Steve.
Thank you.
Steve.
So, Mr. Neri, any action needed to send this forward for publishing and hearing?
No ma'am, just like the others, Madam Members of the Council, we will go ahead and begin the process for the advertising and bring it back.
Very good. Okay, item 8K is a public hearing for ordinance 19-1840. This ordinance amends the section regarding clarification for the wheeled cart collection placement standards, and it is just a clarification in our current ordinance. Welcome, Tom.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, as, just a little history again, last week we were asked to post out for our public hearing, we got two pieces, staff got two pieces of feedback only, we addressed both of those feedback, both of those questions with the public. Staff recommend passing this evening with an effective date of September 9.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions for Tom?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Neri.
I could also add, I guess for the record, the one question we've received is what was the clarification that was being made in the ordinance? The prior ordinance, it was unclear when it, when it referenced the curb and the location of the cart. It could be read to either be the cart edge on the curb or the cart edge in the street. So the intent of this ordinance is now to make it clear it is the cart edge in the street that where the carts need to be, and so that's the clarification. The September 9th date was requested both for the public outreach piece, as well as based on our publishing schedule, if we were to approve it tonight, it would be published in time that it would become effective on Labor Day. That would be problematic for, for the pickup and such for that week, so that's why they asked for the delay for the effective date to be the 9th, so then we can both do the public outreach and they can program in that change.
Thank you, Mr. Cavanagh.
Madam Mayor.
I had a constituent reach out with a couple of questions, I worked to get some of these answered, but there's a couple that I didn't, wasn't able to. It really pertains to how we notify about low-hanging branches. And to me, this is kind of timely, because I got a nice letter in my mailbox this week from the postal service that says, "The branches of a tree in my house are too low and it's impeding their ability to deliver mail." But I also noticed that's the tree where my neighbor also places his trash cans. So, how, how do we educate our citizens if the branches are too low? What's, what's the outreach process? Who's responsible and who's ultimately responsible for solving that problem? I know that's kind of a funky question to ask, but citizen asked, so I said I'd get to the bottom of it.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Cavanagh, there's a, that's kind of a two-fold question. Who is responsible for the tree would be who owns the tree, so if it's a public tree, it could be ACHD, it could be any number of whoever owns the tree, or it could be the actual resident, the homeowner themselves. The notification process is relatively straightforward. Initially, Republic Services would just move the cart out from under the tree to demonstrate to the resident that this is the safe place to put your cart in the future. If this person continued to put it under the tree, that they'd put a hard card on it, a tag notifying them, it would say on it, you know, oh, low, it would point out what it is, you know, low, low rank, something like that, please move your cart to a safer location. If the resident continued to do so, Republic would take it to staff, staff would then notify, say, "This is a safety concern based on damaging of the tree, could damage equipment," and it's just, it's kind of a progressive process. They start out with just moving the card, and then eventually we get to hard card notification.
So, Madam Mayor...
I think it just needs to be trimmed above the obstacle.
Madam Mayor...
Above the item.
The clarification is, it is possible we'd have to involve code enforcement, then if, if a branch is too low, is that likely where we're... Well, Madam Mayor, Mr. Burton, that's my intention, just to cut it, but we're not just talking about policy related to one, it's about all of us.
So, Madam Members of the Council, I could probably take that part.
Thank you.
So, if there's a code enforcement issue from a nuisance standpoint, if it is a tree on private property, but it is protruding into the public right-of-way, then either ACHD or our arborist will notify the property owner that they need to trim the tree. If it's diseased or old, they may require they remove the tree. If they don't remove the tree, they will, the city will remove it and charge the homeowner for it.
Madam Mayor, one additional one, real quickly. Who ultimately determines kind of the, the safety element? Is it Republic determines if something can be safely placed, or if the homeowner? Who, who's the ultimate decision-maker?
Madam Mayor, Mr. Cavanagh, in the code, it actually specifically states that it can be requested by the franchisee to move it to a safe location. If the resident is unhappy with that chosen location, they can come to staff and we can work with Republic to determine a safe location for it.
Yeah, and Mr. Cavanagh, to add on to that, the intent was, is that the initial homeowner has some say in that location, but ultimately, the franchisee has to be able to safely do it, remove the carts, and be able to move them safely for both their vehicles as well as the, the public. So that's why ultimately, they do get the say, if they, if they determine it has to be in this specific location, they are supposed to move it, they can work with staff if there's some other reason that's problematic.
But, Madam Mayor, so just for clarification, I heard staff, franchisee, sounds like franchisee is the one who ultimately has the ultimate deciding.
And, and, Mr. Cavanagh, members of the council, so if you look in the ordinance, it does say the franchisee can designate the specific location. I think what Mr. Adi's saying is that the city as a service will work with those residences to try to mediate if there's an issue of a problem where the franchisee would prefer it and the, and the homeowner thinks it needs to be in a different spot. But ultimately, the franchisee operates the vehicles, has the responsibility to pick up the trash.
Great.
And if all else fails, the mayor and council president will go out and measure.
Great.
We've shuttled snow. We have shuttled snow.
So there.
And the call's your way.
Any further questions? Thank you, Tom. This is a public hearing, is there anyone signed up? Mr. Clerk.
Madam Mayor, there is none.
Is there anyone who wishes to provide testimony on this? Any comment on who should go and measure? I think it should be the council president, myself. Okay, seeing there, there's no comment, counsel. Do you like to close the public hearing?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
I would.
Do I have a motion?
You bet. I move we close the public hearing on 19-1840.
Second.
I have a motion, second, to close the public hearing on item K. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. I believe this is further in...
Sign B.
Okay. Item 8L is a public hearing for ordinance number 19-1841.
Welcome back.
I will open this public hearing. Hi, Tom.
Hello again, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Just some history, this was the, what was discussed last week was the new language for SWAC membership. Staff have received no feedback whatsoever on it. We recommend collapsing the reading's approval with an immediate effective date.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
Nope.
Thank you. Is there any public comment or questions on this item? Counsel, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
We move we close the public hearing on 19-1841.
Second.
I have a motion, second, to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. And ordinance 9A, ordinance number 19-1839, Mr. Clerk, will you please read this by title?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This ordinance, H 2018-0057 Bainbridge Franklin for annexation of a parcel of land located in the northwest one-quarter of the northeast one-quarter of Section 14, Township 3 North, Range 1 West, Boise, Meridian, Ada County, Idaho, as described in the Attachment A and annexing certain lands and territory situated in Ada County, Idaho, and adjacent and contiguous to the corporate limits of the city of Meridian as requested by the city of Meridian, establishing and determining the land use zoning classification of 3.68 acres of land from R1 to CG, general retail and service commercial zoning district in the Meridian City Code, providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder, and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law, and providing for a summary of the ordinance, and providing for a waiver of the reading rules, and providing an effective date.
You've heard this ordinance read by title. Is there anyone who would like to hear it read in its entirety? Counsel? I have a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
I move we approve ordinance number 19-1839 with suspension of rules.
Second.
I have a motion in the second to approve ordinance under 9A, 10A, sorry, 9A. There's no discussion, Mr. Clerk, will you call a roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
Ordinance 9B is 19-1840. Mr. Clerk, will you please read this by title?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's an ordinance amending Title IV, Chapter I, Sections 8C, 3B of the Meridian City Code regarding Wheeled Cart Placement, Wheeled Cart Collection Placement Standards, Location and Placement, providing for a waiver of the reading rules, and providing an effective date.
You've heard this ordinance read by title. Is there anyone who would like to hear it read in its entirety?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
I move we approve ordinance 19-1840 with suspension of rules.
Second.
I have a motion, second, to approve 9B. There's no discussion, Mr. Clerk, will you call a roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. Item 9C is ordinance 19-1841. Mr. Clerk, will you please read this by title?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. An ordinance amending Meridian City Code, Section 263, regarding membership and qualifications for the Meridian Solid Waste Advisory Commission, and providing an effective date.
You've heard this ordinance by title. I do not see anyone wanting to hear it read in its entirety.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
We approve ordinance 19-1841 with suspension of rules.
Second.
I have a motion, second, to approve item 9C. Mr. Clerk, will you call a roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. Item 9D is ordinance 19-1842. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ordinance amending Meridian City Code, Section 9-1-16, regarding connection to city water system outside city limits, amending Meridian City Code, Section 9-4-26, regarding connection to city sewer system outside city limits, and providing an effective date.
You've heard this ordinance read by title. I don't see anyone wanting to hear it read. Counsel, do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
We approve ordinance 19-1842 with suspension of rules.
Second.
I have a motion, second, to approve item 9D. Mr. Clerk, will you call a roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
All ayes. Item 9E is ordinance 19-1843. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ordinance H-2018-0118, Oakmore subdivision, for rezone of a parcel of land, located in the northeast one-quarter of Section 28, Township 4 North, Range 1 West, Boise, Meridian, Ada County, Idaho, establishing and determining the land use zoning classification from R15, medium-high-density residential zoning district, to R4, medium-low-density residential zoning district in the Meridian City Code, and providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder, and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law, and providing for a summary of the ordinance, and providing for a waiver of the reading rules, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. You've heard this ordinance read by title. Is there any further information needed? Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
I move we approve it. Ordinance number 19-1843, let's suspend the rules.
Second.
I have a motion, second, to approve item 9E. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
All ayes. Is there anything for item 10, counsel? There are none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session.
Hey, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I will move, I do move, that we go into executive session pursuant to Idaho State Code 74-206, 1D and 1F.
Second.
I have a motion, second, to adjourn into executive session. Mr. Clerk, will you call a roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
All ayes.